All right, hello and welcome to everybody. Today, Tuesday, August 12th, Planning Board meeting at the Town of Norfolk. In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 38, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the Planning Board will meet today, Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, in Town Hall Meeting Room 124. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in person at One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, or by the remote Zoom connection provided. Please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection. As such, we are experiencing some technological disruptions right now on our Zoom call. We're unable to share our screen or show our image. We do have two Planning Board members that are participating via the Zoom call, Melissa and Dan. If you can go ahead and unmute your cameras so we can at least see you.
I actually don't think they can hear you right now.
It looks like we were muted.
It says not hearing anything. Turn up volume. That's not on us.
If that's not on us...
Are we muted? Is that us?
Yeah.
Hello?
What about the...
Hello?
But I'm live on CCTV at least.
Yeah, you're on NCTV.
NCTV. Okay. I'm about to eat my candy bar, y'all.
We can hear you.
Just give us one moment as we try to at least have some audio for the Zoom call.
Wow. Okay.
Better turn the AC on right now, Gary. Gary, Gary.
I wore shorts just in case we forget.
All right, so at least from a quorum perspective, we've got three we can conduct the meeting, right?
Sure.
Okay. So I will do some introductions. I'm Chris Monfort, the Chair. We've got Gary Sullivan, Vice Chair. We've got Gary Searle on my left. And then we've got on the call, we've got Melissa Mayo and Daniel Seeger. And then we've got Betsy Fajol and Richard McCarthy here as well. Anything audio-wise? Nothing yet?
I need to rejoin.
Okay. All right, so we're going to rejoin the Zoom call. With that, we're going to take our 7:00 PM One Pine Street Public Hearing. They did request a continuance to 9/9/25. So I'm going to look for a motion for a continuance of One Pine Street to 9/9/25 at 7:00 PM. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Gary?
Aye.
Chris Monfort says aye.
Aye.
All right. And we don't have audio from Melissa or Dan. The motion will carry forward though, since we have quorum.
Do we have to state one next meeting?
We did.
Oh, we did. Sorry.
All right, so our next appointment's at 7:15. We've still got some time for that. Rich, anything that's lightweight that we can handle between now and then?
Sure. Definitely. I think lightweight would be that 26 Long Meadow...
28 Long Meadow?
Correct. Thank you. 28 Long Meadow. They have applied for their butters list. We have the email from attorneys working with them that's representing them that they'll be here, complete application pack and plans for your September 9th Planning Board meeting for stormwater management permit as well as an earth removal permit.
Great. Okay.
And then similarly, 50 Fruit Street will be submitted for your September 9th meeting, which is for a stormwater management permit. 50 Fruit Street is a single-family house lot. The owner had purchased the property to demo the existing house and then build a new single-family house on the property. We have been in contact with the owner and their engineer that the amount of clearing did trigger the stormwater permit, so they will be applying as well for your September 9th.
Where are they in that process?
They're ready to... They haven't applied for their butters list yet, but the engineer was in today.
Okay.
So he's... They're well aware of the deadline. I anticipate them not meeting that target date. Another item that's lighter, well, shyer, we don't have any update, so they can... No update at this moment. And next on the agenda, after going, we had interviews for the engineering peer review services for the Planning Board, zoning board of appeals, and the Conservation Commission. There was two finalists, which was Par Corporation and Beta Group. After conducting interviews, looking at their prior work, Beta Group was selected to do the engineering peer review work. It's a three-year contract with one year renewal, so I'm working on getting the contact... Excuse me, the contract terms together, send it off to Town Council, and then have it signed. A little bit different, it's going to... It will be through the land use department because it's handling multiple boards.
Right.
The prior version was just with the Planning Board, but they've been selected, so...
All right, that's good. Good to know. Looking forward to another good three years.
Yep. And then public hearing, excuse me. Updating the fee schedule, we're not ready to do that for the board. A couple reasons. One of the bigger reasons is that your fee schedule is also embedded in Ecode now, so it's not just a standalone fee schedule. So our update, you know, we would have to pay them to update the code, so we need to kind of look at our budget in terms of how we handle that because we will have other updates to Ecode. So we've got to look at that, but we're not ready to do it as of yet, but I think we will be ready later this year, so might be November, December timeframe.
Okay. What are we looking at from a pricing perspective on that?
Recording in progress.
From Ecode?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay. That's unfortunate.
Yeah.
But at least we can bundle it with other changes that we make after the town meeting.
Correct. Exactly. Yep. And I think we got...
One minute? Three minutes.
Three minutes. All right, let's see. What can I say in three minutes?
Arthur?
Yeah, I could say MacArthur Ave in three minutes or less. Yep. So MacArthur Ave is ready, and I would ask the board to vote to recommend to place it on the November town meeting for acceptance. So that will be an action item, but it should be pretty quick.
Do we take your word for it, or should we go out there and see it first?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, do we have any photos or anything like that that we can look at?
Do I have photos? Let me see. You can do it contingent if you'd like to do that. Go out and take a visit.
I would take your word for it, but I don't know.
I have an ASBIL plan.
I don't have...
Has Beta reviewed the ASBILs?
No, so this was not a peer review.
Okay.
That's all right. This was done internally with DPW.
Okay. And they're satisfied that everything's been met?
They are satisfied, yes. A little bit different than some of the street acceptance we've done more recently. This will be done as a taking, because if you remember, MacArthur Ave is a paper street. We had a title exam done earlier this year. There are 13 property owners that have a potential interest in MacArthur Ave. I did send out a letter to them ahead of time, just giving them a prism of what that process would look like. I've spoken to three of them. After talking to them, I think they understood the process in terms of it was just this section and why we have to do it by an eminent domain taking, just to clear title on it. So after that explanation, they were fine, so they didn't have any issues with it. Because, for instance, if they... And this could change, we don't know until we get to that point.
Right.
But we'd have to... If they don't waive damages, then we'd have to hire an appraiser and so forth, so it becomes a little bit more of an expensive proposition, so...
Got it.
But so far, I think we have a green light. So if you were to conditionally take a peek, if you liked, that would be great, but we do need to get it on the warrant for November. And then we got a select board then is going to have to refer back to you for your recommendation and the whole of the hearings, so...
Okay. So I'll look for a motion to put MacArthur Avenue street acceptance on the warrant for the November 12th Fall Special Town Meeting, conditionally pending review by the board.
So moved.
In person. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Do a roll call vote. Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Gary Searle?
Aye.
Chris Monfort, votes aye. And we would love to have Melissa and Dan vote there as well, but unfortunately, we're still having technical difficulties, but the motion does move with the majority of the board voting in the affirmative. All right, thank you. All right, so that, I believe, brings us up to our 7:15 appointment with Chris Shea, who is looking to become our Associate Planning Board member. So Chris, if you don't mind just coming up here.
Sure.
You don't need to grab a microphone, you just talk into that one.
All right.
Introduce yourself, let us know which street you're on. You can sit down.
All right, cool.
And then give us some information about you and yourself.
Yeah, absolutely. How you guys doing? I'm Chris Shea. I'm from 82 Medway Street, Norfolk. I've pretty much been in town for my entire life, as long as my entire family has been as well, since God knows, probably the early 1900s. So yeah, pretty much just been around town forever. I love the town. I've moved away a little bit for college, come back, and really don't see myself anywhere else. But yeah, so I'm a builder in town, local builder, so we do residential, light commercial stuff. We built a house on the corner of Rockwood Road and Boardman. Yeah, I mean, honestly, I've been kind of interested in getting involved a little bit into the town stuff, just to kind of, you know, learn, observe, kind of, you know, figure, help out, give back a little bit to the town that's, you know, kind of helped raise me throughout my entire life, so... Yeah, other than that, you know, honestly, the way I look at it at the beginning, I'm completely new, 100%, haven't ever done anything like this in my life before, so I would definitely love to, you know, mostly observe, kind of learn, and, you know, chip in where I can. But I definitely think that, you know, me as a builder and, you know, working with Rich and stuff, I definitely think that, you know, the skill set kind of aligns a little bit with the Planning Board, and hopefully I can chip in where I, you know, can and I'm allowed to, I guess. I'm not really exactly sure of the specifics of all that, but...
You can contribute in all the ways we can, you're just limited for voting.
Limited for voting, yeah, okay.
Love to have your voice.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, and like I said too at the beginning, you know, I know, again, super new at this, so love, you know, any advice or any, you know, any tips along the way, and I'm also not the best at public speaking, so this will help me with that as well. So, you know, a little bit of everything, so to speak, so...
Awesome. Perfect. So we'll open it up to some questions from the board. First question off the gate, being a builder, being in town, what has been your experience interacting with the town offices with regards to getting permits and getting access to do what it is that you want to?
Yeah, so, I mean, initially, obviously, you know, when you're a young construction worker, you definitely... It's definitely a little harder to earn the trust of, you know, people that are... Have been in the industry for a long time, just because, I mean, it is an industry of, you know, experience, so it's really hard to... It is a little bit hard to kind of break into that and, you know, kind of earn the trust of everybody. But I think in working with, you know, Bob and the different inspectors over the years, and Rich, and, you know, we've worked with Sue a little bit and stuff like that, I definitely... The relationship has grown over the time. I think I've learned a lot from you guys, and I think hopefully, you know, at some point we can help each other out and, you know, hopefully, you know, at certain times, certain towns, not this town specifically, but there's a little... I feel like today in age is a little disconnect with builders and, you know, town departments sometimes, just because it can get, I don't know, it's a little convoluted sometimes, loads a lot of gray areas, so that's also definitely an area I would like to, you know, hopefully contribute to over the course of, you know, however long I may be involved in anything here, to, you know, ease that relationship a little bit, so to speak, so...
Gary, Gary, any questions?
Are you interested in running for a... Aside from being an associate, do you want a full-time member position at some point?
So to speak to you completely honestly, at this point, I can't give you 100% yes on that. You know, personally, I would love to... I really need to see how much, you know, of a time commitment, first of all, that, you know, I would hate to... I don't like to commit to anything that's... I can't give my full, you know, self to. So being a business owner, I'm definitely a pretty busy guy and a new child as well, so this is definitely mostly a learning experience for me along the way, but I definitely, you know, at the end of the day, yes, that is ultimately the goal, is to be, you know, is to stick around for a long time, as I plan to be on Medway Street for quite a long time, so... Yeah.
Gary, anything?
Having grown up in Norfolk and being a builder here, what are your thoughts on what the town needs to focus on, you know, short term or medium term, in order to get what the people want in here?
So, I mean, I think generally off the top, I mean, I think this town is a really nice, quiet, you know, it's not really... It's not really like a... You don't come to Norfolk for... Right, we don't have grocery stores and stuff, which I think is a really nice touch because it keeps it very calm and quiet, and I think a lot of people love that. Definitely one big area I think I would, you know, hopefully the town could improve on at some point, and I know this is... There's other things pending on that as far as, you know, not having town sewer in the center of town, stuff like that. I think the center could use a little more, you know, excitement as far as restaurants or, you know, anything like that to kind of draw into the town. Again, obviously, I know that's a little difficult without having town sewer and stuff like that, but again, that could be hopefully somewhere where it could maybe, you know, help along down the lines and, you know, help arrange and stuff like that. But ultimately, I think the town does a great job of, you know, keeping its charm, keeping its, you know, true roots for the most part, so...
Awesome.
Rich, anyone else, any questions?
No, I mean, I worked with Chris quite a bit at this point in terms of different things, so I...
What's your favorite bylaw? All right, so, you know, I'm affirmative. I think this would be great, having you as an associate member. I'm going to look for a motion to recommend Chris Shea as the Associate Planning Board member for our next select board meeting.
So moved. Second.
All right, roll call vote. Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Chris Monfort, aye. Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
All right, and then again, we've got quorum. Melissa and Dan are on the call, but they can't participate.
They're watching livestream.
They're watching livestream, okay. I would need them to unmute their video and come off of their audio mute when I call their name and tell me no, whether or not they are in the affirmative. So Melissa Mayo, are you affirmative? This is a test more than anything.
Maybe. Yes.
Melissa Mayo, are you affirmative?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you with a proper delay, more than anything.
Maybe. Yes.
Can you hear me?
Mayo, are you affirmative?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. We've got an awesome loop. All right, Dan Seeger, are you affirmative on the motion at hand?
Hell on mute. There's like a 10-second delay.
I need voice.
We're so close.
I need voice.
Wow, it's quite intense.
I don't think it's audio.
Yeah, sorry, I'm here. I was trying to shut off the livestream so you didn't get a bit of echo.
Thank you. All right, so Dan, are you positive, voting in the affirmative here?
I'm here, I'm trying to shut off the...
Or the opposite. All right, so Dan, are you positive?
Now he's muted again.
Sorry, Chris, I didn't catch that.
All right, so Dan, in the motion for Chris Shea to be recommended to the select board for the Associate Planning Board position, do you vote? Aye? All right, so Dan, in the motion for Chris Shea to be recommended to the select board for the Associate Planning Board position, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, that was painless. All right, so congratulations, that's the first step. So what the next step will be is you have to join the next select board meeting. We'll send a notification to you via email, we'll get that scheduled, and I'll join you on that call. You'll introduce yourself to them, and then they'll vote on it, and we'll move forward from there.
Awesome, very good.
Awesome.
Well, thank you for your time, guys, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Being a member of the board now, get used to a lot of questions about sidewalks, grocery stores. A lot of questions.
I think it'll be September 15th, by the way.
September 15th.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, we might just take it now.
You want to do it now?
Oh, yeah, since you're here.
Which one?
Hill Street.
Okay. Seven Hill Street is up next.
Well, yeah, it's actually first, so that's fine.
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll...
All right, so Rich, Seven Hill Street.
Yeah, so Seven Hill Street, we're looking to have put a delivery date revisions for the affordable for the duplexes at Seven Hill Street. Put it in the packet. Essentially, the draft...
Yep, I actually made a hard copy in there.
Yeah. Although I will... Did you edit out Bob and put in... I see I wrote...
Still says Bob.
In the hard packet?
Still say Bob? We'll correct that.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's all right, I just picked it up just now, but I will... So that's a letter that I'll give way to Sue Jacobs, the Affordable Housing Director, to explain why we'll be looking for this modification.
Okay. Welcome.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Sue Jacobs, an Affordable Housing Director. So I'm here before you see if we can allow them to sell a couple more market rate units. I came back... I came before the board some time ago and made a request because there was just a lot of... Took a great amount of time for EverSource, a year and a half for power, and... But I'm here tonight because I actually had a fall and was out of the office for a little bit of time, and then I was back for a limited amount of time during the day, and it's put them behind. And I'm a one-person show, so I don't have anybody else that can pick up the pieces, and I don't want them to pay the price for my being out of the office and not being able to sell any market rate unit. So I met with Rich and we discussed it, and I did tell Mr. Baker that he didn't have to be here tonight. He did come to the last meeting, but if he wanted to attend, he could via Zoom. That's not working for us, so that's why I'm here before you tonight, to see if we can make that modification.
Okay. Any questions?
Seems pretty clear.
All right, so we're looking at a specific timeline that we're allowing?
Not necessarily timeline, it's delivery prior to the last market rate dwelling. Where are we in the decade?
This is like the first page, actually, after the... Is it in yours?
No, I'm so stuck. Okay.
Yeah, so it would be voting to modify condition number one, that the affordable unit must be provided prior to the occupancy permit of the last market rate dwelling.
Last something's in there.
Okay.
I can read that.
All right, so I'm going to be looking for a motion to modify condition number one of the affordable... Stating that the affordable unit must be provided prior to the occupancy permit of the last market rate dwelling unit for Seven Hill Street.
So moved. Second.
All right, roll call vote. Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Chris Monfort, aye?
Aye.
I gotta see your name first.
Go ahead.
All right.
Aye.
All right, let's try this one again. Melissa Mayo, come off of video mute and audio mute.
Aye.
Chris Monfort, aye?
Aye.
I gotta see your name first. All right. Let's try this one again. Melissa Mayo, come off of video mute and audio mute.
Aye.
All right, Daniel Seeger, your vote? Maybe he didn't hear it.
Nope, I think he's waiting for you.
Mr. Daniel Seeger, your vote?
You don't hear it echo back with him.
No.
All right, this one doesn't have to be unanimous, right?
No, it doesn't.
All right, so we've got quorum, we're going to move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for the help. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
You're on mute, Donna. The laptop. Okay.
There was a message Dan wrote to Chris.
Oh. No, Dan, we can't. You're on mute. Thank you, Donna.
No, that was Melissa had asked him.
Okay, so this is going to be interesting.
Moving right along.
All right, so the bond reduction, Norway Farms.
Interesting.
Well, just thinking ahead, but that's all right. So the bond reduction is for Norway Farms.
Yep.
There is an Excel spreadsheet in your folder, which has the value of... You vote the reduction to $59,755. The reduction requested this time with an amount of $46,411. Supervision for the construction of Norway Farms has been through the Norfolk DPW Department, so this bond reduction is coming from DPW.
Their recommendation.
There is a... If you saw, there was a letter that was provided to DPW with some photographs of some of the work that was done. Maybe you had a chance to go out and take a look as well. They've done a nice job out there. And the sidewalk is in, obviously, because that's one of the items that's being requested to be reduced, the sidewalk between Norway's Farm Drive and Crespock Road.
Mr. Umanov on the agenda? 117 down to 59?
It is 179.
117 down to 59, looks like it's off by $10,000, unless I can add any more, that could be two.
Well, also a question, we've got a couple of dollar items in here that say zero-dollar cost, but we've got percentage of completion still there? So are we...
250s now.
We've got the mobilization, the bioretention basin. Bioretention basin says it's 50% completion. It's a $20,000 cost, so would I expect that there's still $10,000 worth of work that needs to be done?
Uh, no. That was in full transparency, Barry Larriviera, who was the Assistant DPW Director, handled the bond reduction work on behalf of DPW, so I didn't... I'm working with Blair. So that should be 100% complete, that cell, so...
So it should be zero.
It should be zero, so...
So all of the zero-dollar items should be zero.
Should be 100% complete.
Which means there's 0% to complete.
Yeah, should...
So that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 items as listed here that we're confident are complete.
Yes, the only things that you'd be holding left, timing-wise, tack coat, top course for the roadway, pavement markings, ASBIL plans, and legal services. All the other remaining items have been complete and satisfactory. I think if I was doing this, I would change all those.[1747.12] I think, if I was doing this, I would change all those.
I was gonna say, do you want me to find you a cough drop?
If you go to the top of that Excel spreadsheet, it says Cape Cod burn, that last column? I mean, maybe, I would put them all at 100% because they're complete.
No, well, it says percent to complete. How much more do they need to do in order to complete it?
It is complete.
Right, so that's why it says zero.
Why it says zero.
All right.
So if you look at legal services, that's not complete at all, because it's 100% left to go.
Right.
Yes, yes, yes.
Likewise, the.
So I didn't change.
Top course, the roadway is 100%, 100% left to go, so the full 36,000.
Yes, mobilization should be zero.
Mobilization should be zero.
Bio retention basin?
Bio retention should be zero.
Okay. Bituminous binder curb grinding.
That should be zero.
And then we have the top course for the sidewalk.
That should be zero.
That's for.
Excuse me, not for the, the roadway's 100%.
Yeah, the roadway is 100% still needs to be done, but the top course for the Dev sidewalk and the Medway Street sidewalk.
Those are complete.
The gravel borrow.
Complete.
The bituminous binder course for the Medway Street.
Complete.
The complete earthwork.
Complete.
The relocation of the stone wall.
Complete.
Okay. Those are all the ones in question. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to reduce the bond for Norway Farms to $59,755.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Motford, votes aye. Mr. Searle?
Aye.
$55.
Ms. Mayo?
14, 15.
I am looking at the spreadsheet, and I'm trying to figure out if we should be multiplying, hold on, let me just.
Put on your camera too, when you have a chance.
So the price for some of the items, there's a quantity next to it, and I'm not sure if we're supposed to be multiplying those, or if that's just.
Which one is in question?
It shows zero cost.
Yeah, so if it's a zero cost, we've gone through that.
Follow this.
I forgot, it's not real time.
If it's zero cost, it's complete.
Okay, if there's zero cost, I'm good.
Okay, awesome. All right, Dan, Seeger? All right, seeing as how we have quorum on the votes, we're going to move forward with the approval of the bond reduction for Norway Farms. All right, Bristol Pond Estates, review and vote on the bond offer. What you got for us there, Rich?
Just before I get to that, are you able to, in the chat, that's a tell Franz that's already done? He's not, he was from MacArthur.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so Bristol Pond Estates, as you're, well, quickly, the planning board had pulled the bond for completion and submitted the remaining cost estimate to complete, that $40,000. The bonding company made a counter offer, not in full amount, of $40,000. DPW had sent an email back to me, to the board, saying that that is a fair estimate of the remaining work to be completed, and thought that counter was a little bit too low, at $33,266.75. So what I'm asking is, to see if, back to the bonding company, to see if we can get a better offer, closer to that full amount, without having to go down a pathway to engage legal counsel and start to eat away at trying to negotiate the full amount, having to take away from what's left now. When I say legal, that would be outside this budget process because we can't.
But it's just a bond reduction, right? Why, you, what are you holding now for the bond?
It's, it's $40,000.
It is $40,000.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a performance with the bonding company, so $40,000 was the final amount. We've asked for the full amount, they're saying that those numbers are too high, in terms of what we're carrying those line items for. And we are.
I get it.
Countering back to them, saying those estimates are not too high.
So we're looking at a delta of about 4K between where we want to be and where they're at?
Yeah.
Okay. So the ask to the board is whether or not we're supportive of us going back to the bonding company to see if we can close that gap?
Correct.
You need a formal vote for us for that?
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be appreciated, that way I can, because I told the bonding company that this is your first opportunity to kind of review it.
Yeah.
And weigh in on it, so yeah, vote would be.
Okay. Yep, so I'm fine with us returning to the bond company for Bristol Pond Estates to attempt to recoup the $4,000 delta. That's what we're supposed to vote on, right?
Is, is DPW, they costed the remaining work out themselves, are they executing any of the work?
There'll be some work that they will do, but we'll also have to hire.
Third party?
Two as well, yeah.
Okay.
So, I did, I just want to add that I did reach out to TruX Engineering, since it's an engineering company, changed name, but they do have the ASBIL plans for Bristol Pond Estates.
Yep.
So in terms of having to, well, that's a different bond up on the screen, but in terms of having to, you know, go out and hire them to pay for the full cost of the ASBIL plans, we won't have to do that because they have them already.
Okay.
So that'll save, what we will need is a, is a acceptance plan of them, so there will be some cost, but not the full amount in terms of those ASBIL plans.
And who does the execution? DPW's not doing all the work, do they complete all the third-party work as well? They manage that?
The third-party work, yeah.
Okay.
Well, in combination with us, actually, with myself.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, we will have to come back and make some value engineering changes in terms of, like landscaping-wise, because we're not going to be able to fulfill the full landscaping promise that residents would want to have there, but we want at least to get as maximum as much as we can from the bond company.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so looking for a motion to continue the negotiation around the bond for Bristol Pond Estates.
So moved.
Well, he better.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, vote. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Motford, aye. Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Ms. Mayo? Video mute off, audio mute off.
I see Daniel's iPhone, so that might be good, too.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Daniel Seeger, do you vote to approve?
Video mute off.
Briefly.
Yeah, I think his delay is more than Melissa's today.
Yeah.
Interesting.
He's on vacations, I might not.
Yeah, right.
He's back. Aye.
All right, thank you.
All right.
All right, we got quorum on that one, perfect, thank you. This is fun. All right. I hate to do this, but Melissa, can, we do the meeting minutes for some?
Oh, that's Dan.
Oh, Dan, Dan, Dan the man, meeting minutes.
Can I do the meeting minutes?
Well, anybody can, yeah, sure.
Let's see if he unmutes. Nope, he's gone. All right, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I vote to approve the meeting minutes as written for seven, we'll do these in two several ones, so July 8th, 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, vote. Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Motford, votes aye. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
Mr. Seeger? He's not there.
Oh, he's back.
Oh, he's there.
All right, let's go to the next one.
Hold on, no, no, it took like 20 seconds.
You gotta come off of video mute, though.
All right, that's the rule.
Really?
Yeah, the rule is you have to be seen.
Oh, good scene, yeah.
Wow.
Mr. Seeger, one more time, off of video mute.
Melissa, then, so say aye, and then pretend to be like, then right after Dan, say aye.
I know.
Yeah.
That works.
That works.
Okay, moving along.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
There it goes.
Thank you.
That was an aye.
Perfect.
Yes.
Something's going on there.
Okay, I vote to, motion to approve, I make a motion to approve the July 28th, 2025 meeting minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, vote. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Motford, aye. Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Ms. Mayo? Mr. Seeger?
All right, just wait.
Aye.
Very clear.
That's right. Do we have a second? Second. Aye. All right, roll call, vote.
Nice.
Nice, all right, we're getting the hang of this.
Yeah, that worked.
All right, Rich. This is the fun one. We're down to the proposed by, this winning bylaw amendments.
Yeah, so.
So, well, before we dive into this.
Yeah.
Does it make sense for us to continue those into another meeting and we just add one?
Add a meeting?
Yeah, so that we can do it without any technical difficulties and we can allow actual conversation to occur.
100 million percent.
Okay. Any concerns with that?
I, I came with a ton of stuff to talk about.
Damn it.
Now, there is a timing piece to that.
Yeah, that's my concern.
I get that.
But I'm, I'm all in favor because I do appreciate Dan and Melissa's opinions on this stuff especially.
100%.
So like if you wanted to do it maybe all Zoom, like one of the others?
All Zoom.
Yeah, all Zoom.
Yeah, and we just got to find a new date and time for us to do this.
Yes.
How are we looking at for early next week?
Let me check my busy schedule, I'm available.
What, next week, I'm back Monday, Tuesday, I'm in the office, but I'd be home at night Wednesday, ooh, wow. Hey, I also have a, like, except for Monday, I'm clear all week.
There we go.
Now, though, I do have the ZBA meeting on Wednesday night, but that's it.
What time is that?
7:00. 7:00 PM, yeah.
Is their agenda big? Well, we wouldn't want you to do back-to-back meetings, that's a big.
I'll be in California next week, but I can make this work. If we do Thursday, I don't have a flight until like late that night, I'm doing the red eye.
So that would be late, late, late for us.
No, no, I mean, if we do 7:00 PM our time here, that's like 4:00 PM dinner, that's perfect for me.
Okay.
So does Thursday work?
Sure. All right, 30 seconds, we'll know what.
So Melissa and Dan, Thursday next week, 7:00 PM, Zoom only, can you do it?
Dan says on the way next week, but can join any night technology notwithstanding.
All right, Melissa.
Yes.
That's good, okay.
Yes.
So everyone, good.
I think it'll work, technology-wise, because you'll all be on Zoom.
Yeah.
All right, Dan said yes, okay.
Okay.
All right, so we are going to move that section to our next meeting on Thursday, August 21st, at 7:00 PM, it will be Zoom only.
I know it's on delay, but I want to thank you all for being very agile, responsive to unplanned circumstances this evening.
We put the work in because we know you put the work in, Rich.
100%.
Thank you.
All right. Any other updates?
No.
All right, we've got a reschedule for November, we'll deal with that at our next meeting. Any other anticipated new business that may come before the board, either here or online? I gotta give it 30 seconds.
No, I know, I understand.
I think Dan's like 45 behind.
Oh, gee, it was weird, he seems much further behind.
Yeah, it's like, because they're watching on YouTube, so.
Oh, okay.
How it's delivered changes.
She shook her head, I'm quite sure.
All right, awesome, so then I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn this meeting in record time.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, vote. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Motford, aye. Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Ms. Mayo? Mr. Seeger?
I don't have anything else.
Yeah, but.
She was on a long delay now, too.
Aye.
All right.
Do we have a second? All right, roll call. Mr. Sullivan?
Nice, all right, that was close enough.
That was an aye.
I heard it.
All right, thank you all, thank you for bearing with us during this technological difficult time, and we will see.